All right, good evening and welcome to the Powell Elementary School Board of Directors meeting for Wednesday, January fifteenth. We will start by the Pledge of Allegiance by the Board.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, second on the agenda is presentation by Jeremiah Madison, our Behavior Specialist. Come right down.
Wasn't expecting to be up quite that quick. So, good evening ladies and gentlemen, I am Jeremiah Madison, the Behavior Specialist here at Powell Elementary. Todd kind of asked me to present here to just go over a few of the successes that we've had here at the school as well as a few of the projects that I've been involved in. First, I do want to thank all of you for your commitment and dedication to the students here at Powell. I started here last year, last school year, two thousand twelve, fall of two thousand twelve, and since I've been here, one of the biggest things I've done is I started the VST team, Behavior Support Team. You can see our norms right there on the front, that's what we developed kind of to guide our team. And with that team, I lead it. There are seven members total, I'm one of them. The principal, Todd, is on the team as well, we have five other members. Basically, what happens with that team is staff can refer, special educators, pares, special teachers, any of the staff can refer, or if we see a student has reached so many referrals because of behavior issues, they might automatically be referred. And that's new this year with automatic referrals. They fill out a referral form, we schedule a meeting, teachers come in, special educators, if the student is an IEP student or a 504 student, they come in, any other staff that they choose to have at the meeting, and we collaborate with the teacher. Our whole goal is to collaborate with the teacher, to find interventions that are appropriate for their classroom, because every teacher has a different teaching style. So, we collaborate with them, come up with different interventions, and put them in place. We notify any staff that need to be notified of those interventions depending on what they are, if it's something for a special class, or something that the para needs to know in that classroom. And then we reconvene six to eight weeks later, and go over, check the fidelity and the effectiveness of the plan that's in place, make modifications when needed. The whole time before and after, I am doing observations in the classroom, checking the student, keeping track. I have a app on my iPad that really helps just keep track of behavior incidents and stuff. So, it's really nice in that regard. You'll see the second set of information I gave you, that's an example of our new behavior plan. On there, you'll see a function of behavior assessment on that first page along with a little note to the teacher, because the teachers always can say, hey, this isn't working, I need to change it, early in the six to eight weeks, as well as the FBA part. If you flip that first page, you'll see an example of the plan. This is actually a new plan that I've developed, and it's actually been adapted by all the other schools in the SBSU. All the other schools are using this for their plan, which is going to help with kids moving to the middle school, or if they change schools, as well as kids coming to us from Benell or Monument, what have you. In addition to that, like I said, we've had several successes. Some of our bigger successes, we have one student that was having severe physical aggression issues towards staff and students. We put a plan in place, and we have not had any type of physical aggression from him since before Thanksgiving. So, that's a huge success. We still see other issues, but we'll work on those as the time comes. We have another student that he was in class maybe a total of an hour at the start of the year. He could not stay in class, and we've gotten him where he was receiving two to three referrals a day. And now he's down to getting one to three a week. Sometimes they're significant, for the most part they're not, and he's in class probably, I'd say about seventy-five percent of the time. So, we're seeing a huge growth there. And one of our biggest successes was a student that all last year, was very difficult this year, start of the year, teacher came to me and said, I don't know what to do. We put a plan in place, and we have not had any incidents, any significant incident from him within the past six weeks, and he just graduated from our check-in-checkout program. So, he has been doing fantastic. With that, the next page you'll see the check-in-checkout spreadsheet, and the coordinator of the check-in-checkout program. We have changed, one of the big changes that we have made here, it used to be that one person, when I first came in last year, I was in charge of every, all the students that we had on, a twelve to fourteen student at once, and it wasn't really easy and good for me to try to check them all in the morning, check them all out in the afternoon, I wasn't really making a difference. So, last spring, I met with two other individuals who are on the check-in-checkout team, and we changed it to a mentor system. So, I asked volunteers, several teachers and para educators volunteered to be mentors, to match the students up that are on the program with a mentor, and now it becomes a personal relationship, and that teacher is very, or that para is very invested in that student, checks in with them in the morning, checks in and out with them in the afternoon, and really, really kind of makes that relationship. If they're having a rough day, they go see how they're doing. If it's their birthday, they make sure that their birthday is a little special. So, it's really helped with the relationship program, which has really aided in the fidelity and the effectiveness of the program. Also, since I've been here this year, I became the co-coordinator of the Positive Behavior Interventions and Support System, which I'm co-coordinator with Karen Therret, PBIS is what you'll hear kids refer to it. We've made several changes, I've collaborated with the team, we've made several changes this year for the PBIS team. One of the big ones, you'll see the next set of, the next whole, it's like three or four pages, that was the Behavior Matrix. We completely changed the Behavior Matrix for Consequences this year. It is more geared toward giving more responsibility and ownership towards the students and the parents, involving having parents come in for meetings if we need to, and calls to the parents rather than having the old plan, as we called it, being sent home every time a child did something. This eliminated that black cloud sitting over their head all day, knowing that I have this plan and I got to get home. We call, done, it's over, and we move on. It also empowers the teachers, a lot more, the classroom teachers, because it allows a lot of the different consequences in there are more geared towards the teacher taking control and saying, this is what's going to happen, and it just helps them, because now they have control instead of having to send them out, and we make a decision on what the consequence is going to be. Yes, ma'am?
Just looking at this first page, my question would be, it looks like only at the third time do they get sent to the Success Center.
Everything is different. Each issue is different, it depends on what it is.
Because it used to be, bada bing bada boom, you're out, you're at the Success Center.
Absolutely, and that's what it's supposed to be. Occasionally, we still have incidents that first time they go in, it depends on the student, depends on the incident, and sometimes you'll look on some of those, it's the fourth incident, occasionally it's the second, it depends on what the issue is.
It really does, it depends on the situation. We try to reteach an expectation if we need to, because going right down to the Success Center, we felt was very, wasn't effective.
Exactly.
No.
We want the kids more in the classroom than out of the classroom, that's where the learning takes place.
That's what I think is much better than just...
So, at times, notification to parents, do go home if we don't get a phone call in, but not sending as many of those out.
Very end of the day, if something happens, we might send a referral home instead of trying to call a parent, or if we've called, left messages, don't hear back, we'll send a plan home that they're called. We're trying to change the language of that as well, calling them reports.
Report rather than a plan.
Because the plans, as you saw this before, it's trying to prevent, this is the report of what happened. But we're trying to limit those as much as possible, and that, it just, it works better for kids, because one of the things we always heard was, I don't want to get a plan, I don't want to get, nope, you're not going to get a plan, let's deal with this, it's done with. And typically, it's, if it's severe enough, we make a call to the parents. And it also kind of puts the onus on the parents as well, because now we have, actually have the child report to them. We don't sit there and say, this is what happened. The parent, the child goes, I don't value education, I kept talking in class, or something to that effect, and the parent, the parent has to listen to them, and then I always get on and clarify what happened, or Ms. Stevens does. But it puts more onus on the student and on the parents. So, does that answer your question?
Yes, I'm very pleased to see this.
I'm glad, we worked hard on it as a team.
Especially because the plans never made it home.
Yeah, and that was another thing. Yeah, that was another thing, a lot of times we didn't give them back or whatever.
With the backpack.
Yeah, this way, it's also notifying a little better. Another big change that we made up with the PBIS team was we started morning activity period. We're not doing it right now with the winter, although we could have today. The weather is so bearable right now, we're not doing it during the winter, here in the fall, during the spring, we'll pick it back up. When I first arrived here in the morning, you have two hundred plus kids in the gym, kids trying to eat breakfast, it just got really chaotic. So, we sent them out of the building, sent them out to the playground, and have them start playing. Studies have shown, I don't know if you guys have ever read Drive or Spark, a lot of studies have shown that the more physical activity students get, the better they're going to behave in the classroom, the more they're going to learn, test results go up. So, we put this in place, getting kids out there, and a lot of teachers have reported back to us that when kids came back in, they seemed more settled, and they seemed ready to learn. I mean, some of our kids, it doesn't help, but the majority of them, it does. And so, we're looking forward to the spring so we can get them back out there and do this. Those are kind of some of the bigger things we put in with PBIS, just a couple of things that I've done as well. Since I've been here at Powell, I got my CDL, I have to drive a bus, so I'm a backup bus driver, in case Mr. Kep is out and our substitute is taking bowling or something, I'll drive a bus. Also, last fall, I received the opportunity to go up to Burlington, I became a state-based trainer in functional behavior assessment, and I am actually currently in the process of planning a training where we're going to invite staff from all over the district, including our school, to come and get skilled, more skills to help their classroom, and in addition to that, be able to create basically what you see on the first page of the Behavior Plan, that little function, functional assessment. So, that way, if a teacher sees one or two kids, or one or two things that are happening in the class, they're not that severe, they have more skill, more things at hand, more tools at hand to be able to help them. So, we're going to do that. And lastly, this February, I am actually going to attend, during winter break, I'm going to attend a class and become a lifeguard, certified Red Cross lifeguard trainer. And with that, I'll be able to teach first aid and CPR, and probably in April, may I have talked to Todd, I'll be offering some, if any staff want to attend, some training sessions to renew first aid and CPR to our staff, so.
We can get swimming pool now.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
First of all, I have a third grader here, okay?
Yes, sir.
And she loves to play school and to teach her a three-year-old, who's ever there, whether my mother is teaching school, and all I've been hearing for the last couple of months is consequences, okay? And, you know, expectations. It's kind of neat to hear it, I hear this.
Absolutely, we've really promoted since the start of school.
It's a buzzword around the school among the eight, nine-year-olds.
Using the same language, all among, all the staff, and Todd's really promoted that, so.
Very nice there. And the other one is more of a business, I should know this, but I don't. Are you employed by Powell or by the Supervisory Union?
I'm employed by Powell.
By Powell, directly.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
We see the big leg.
No, I understand.
Who's cracking, who pays who?
Absolutely, I definitely understand that.
Thank you.
Since Jeremiah has came on board, I mean, we've really seen a difference. I, you know, I value him as an educator, and he's doing great things with our kids.
Thank you, Todd, and I really appreciate working here, and I look forward to several more years working here. And I love the staff that I work with, and I couldn't ask for a better school to work at. I really, I was telling Todd just a week ago, I really think Powell's on the right track. I mean, you look at other schools and they're doing things, but I really think that we're heading in the right direction. We have our bumps and bruises, just like every school, but I couldn't ask for a better school to work at.
What you're doing, would you consider it a special ed prevention avoidance technique to keep, to people, because it's for everybody, it's not just special ed, which I think is fantastic, but that keeps more people on the special ed?
It definitely could, but it's not really related.
Yeah, we're, my position is more geared towards students that their behaviors are not caused by a learning disability. It gets kind of blurred occasionally, we see some students that are, they're acting out because they can't read. They may come to me depending on severity, or they may go to our Educational Support Team, our EST, and so that we can get more services in place for them educationally. I'm more geared towards the students that are acting out because of stuff such as ADHD, they just can't focus, or that they just, the environment that they come from, there's no accountability there, or whatever it is, I'm geared towards those students, and so they're the ones I focus on. And I'm here to support the teachers as much as the students. I've had several teachers, how can I do this? I don't know, I'm at my wit's end, and I'm there for them as well.
Good, well, thank you very much, we appreciate you taking the time. I think it's important that you explain, you know, to the Board.
Absolutely, I appreciate the opportunity. I have to say, I don't mean to be rude, my wife is pregnant, and we have something going on for her pregnancy right now, so I do have to excuse myself in the board meeting.
Thank you for that.
But I do appreciate everything you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there any public comment? Do you have public comment? Personnel? All right. Okay, finance facility.
It'll go away.
Finance facilities, reference action items. Do we have any of those? I don't know them either. Okay.
Other than just, did Todd just want to talk about them, or you're all set with that?
Yeah, you know, I know on Monday, and, you know, we talked at our budget meeting about the heating system.
Yes.
And I did talk to Rich the following day, and there was, there is a problem with replacing a valve, and that valve was replaced today, as you can tell today, it's so much more comfortable in here.
So much easier, right?
Keeping an eye on that, but we will be getting systems checked as well here down the road, but we wanted to see how well this valve would do, and he thinks there may be a couple other areas to where a valve may need to be replaced as well, and we're going to take care of those.
Yeah, because it does need much more.
Just a valve?
Yeah. But we're still going to have it checked, is that correct?
The by one rule.
We're having, okay, I think that's important, the whole thing.
I'm sorry I'm late, you were the eyes of the house, kind of telling us application. I took it this is for you.
That's what, you just missed the Behavior Specialist, but that's going to be, yeah, that's okay.
I meant to ask, do they open the water here? Todd, do you soften the water here?
Yeah.
Because that's what causes valves to stick. This is extremely hard work.
Okay, moving on to action items again, the Treasurers' Report for December. Okay, we always see that, any questions on it? Okay, we have budget transfers. Okay, under facilities, I guess that would have been the valve, bottom. Okay, we're down to the consent agenda, any motions?
I have one question.
Not until we have a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Right now, any questions?
A question for Jim. Here, I can't find it, but there's a $400,000 assessment from the Supervisory Union to us, and I just wanted to know what period that comes in.
What page are you on?
Yeah, I'm looking for it.
That's something specific, that's not...
Page seven. $391,000 on voucher two zero zero six.
The assessments for the full year, but what they do is they split it over into four payments.
Four payments.
The first payment, I think, is about, a small, it's like one quarter, and then the other one is, or it might even be one-fifth, and the other ones are split out with the balance over the three periods, because they don't want to take so much money.
Quarterly is, quarterly, so it's a quarterly, and then the other one is just trivial. But I thought Rick says we're going to scrap resource room and just call it sped, the third is elementary resource room. I thought that phrase was dead.
I'll have to check with him on that.
Just curious.
It might not have been changed on the purchase order, but purchase order is written at the beginning of the year, that stays in there unless someone goes in and changes it.
And then just, just a question for Todd, I see we have a bus inspection for dipoes that's been taken care of.
It has, yep.
Who is that?
It's over toward...
This one for Dorset?
It is.
Okay, we now have, remember at one of the wards...
I remember where we were.
We couldn't, the gentleman from Bennington could not, he changed his mind, did not want to inspect the buses. So, now, the next best thing that we have is sending the buses to Dorset, which I'm trying to get ahold of Bill Botson, I want to talk to him. It's expensive for us now, because five buses, five different trips up, the expense went up.
The fee itself and the warrant is seventy dollars per bus.
Yeah, it's gone up to seventy, I think it was fifty-five per bus. But now you're paying the maintenance man or the bus driver, whichever one goes up, for, what is it, an hour up?
Yeah, the time there.
Yeah, their time, inspection, and I think the next thing that we were going to ask, Joel said that right now we're, three times a year we have to be inspected. So, what we want to do is ask our legislators, ask Bill if he could, see if we can get away with just doing two. I mean, our hands are tied, we need the buses to be inspected.
But you're on it, we're following it.
Oh, yeah, yes, he's taking them to Dorset. Now, it would be nice to have somebody around the area that would pick it up, and maybe somebody will at some point, but in the meantime, I think Joel had said, I left my notes home for Bill, to inspect them like in August, and then again, maybe in January. So, two instead of three is better, but, yeah, I'm working on that, I'm trying to get ahold of Bill and talk to him about it.
And the last little thing, I just haven't noticed that we have a security light bill of forty-six dollars and fifty-five cents. Did we decide we wanted that, or?
Yes, we did, because it's out in the parking lot, it's out in the back parking lot, and it's, it's...
Okay.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, for security.
Is it on, is it working?
Yeah.
Or paying for it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's it? Is there any other discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, we have one policy, five zero zero three, prevention of bullying of students to adopt. Can I have a motion?
A motion.
Motion remains second, is there any discussion on it?
I'm going to vote against it for whatever reasons.
No discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Okay? Opposed? Okay. You want to tell us why, or?
Orwellian, overre, I mean, there's enough rules and stuff in place, I think. I just don't, I just envision third graders with rap sheets.
And that's your, well, that's your opinion, I think, to me, bullying could never have enough. I think that's the number one thing that really bothers me in schools, bullying. All right, we're down to the Principals' Report.
Sure, a couple of things. First of all, just wanted to let the Board know, at your request, during the December meeting, the bus paras are only riding at night, the PM rides. We do have one bus that has a para in the morning due to students with IEPs that we've discussed about before, so just wanted to give an update there, that that's in place. As far as any data showing incidents on the bus in the morning, we've had a few, and I know Jessica Rabidu, our counselor, was here the other evening at the budget meeting, and she talked about some things that we have to, you know, do now in the morning and talk to some kids, but just wanted to report that that's in place. The other thing that I wanted just to mention to the Board, we've been talking about how we needed to have a Red Cross training to have here at Powell. So, it has been set up for Saturday, March the first, I have a few flyers, it'll be ten AM until twelve thirty. It has been put on the Front Porch Forum, and Larry Cutherman, you know, from the Red Cross will be doing the training. Mike was contacted, the fire departments have been contacted as well, so volunteers would sign up by calling the school to let us know that they'd like to be trained and be a part of, be a part of the team.
Is this the group of people that Mike said that he was going to pick?
Right.
Pick and choose?
Well, not pick and choose, he was going to gather, but he sent us an email, and you got it too, about how he's having a hard time getting volunteers.
Okay, so that's why you followed him.
Yep.
All right, that's good.
Is there any other thing?
Thank you, Todd.
I work Saturday morning until eleven, but I still come.
Sure.
How are you? That's good.
Everyone's, you're all welcome.
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you.
Yep, my truth.
That's all right. I've done my homework today.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Superintendent and Chief Financial Officer's Report. I don't know where she, I just left her at the meeting, I bet that's her now, could have saved her a trip. I know our next board meeting, we have the budget meeting Monday at six o'clock, which we decided we are going to have it because school is closed anyways, and then our next board meeting is going to be the nineteenth.
And the nineteenth is a week of, the entire week we're out, it's a vacation week.
That's vacation week? Oh.
So, if we could possibly have it Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, the last Wednesday.
We usually do change it, we have to, but the week of what?
Yeah, and I'll be out of town the week of the seventeenth, so.
I would do twenty-fourth of February, too much. Okay, well, how about, I know the twenty-second is SBSU.
That was my question too, when is the Supervisory Union?
Turn to February.
This is February.
Oh, you got it.
Isn't it? Oh, sorry. That would help? Okay, this is the vacation week.
When is the February Supervisory Union meeting?
On the twenty-second, oh, for next month, the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
So, we were here.
What about, what about Thursday, the twenty-seventh? Are you out? You're gone?
I won't be here, yeah. I mean, you guys can go ahead, I'll watch it.
Okay. Well, we've either done it the week before or the week after. What is the Board's pleasure?
If we did it the week before, I could, I could come.
Twelve.
Todd, what is your schedule?
It's a direct conflict with the Supervisory Union.
Twelve is fine.
Is that okay with you?
Yeah.
Sooner.
Sooner. Does that look okay for you, the twelve? It's the week before.
February twelfth?
February twelfth.
Is that the second?
Second.
Okay, and with time, because that's also, we're going to juggle meetings, because Sheffsbury and North Bennington meet that week on the Wednesday. So, are you going to Wednesday or Thursday?
Wednesday.
Okay, so, we'll figure out the...
Ours is at five-thirty.
All right. North Bennington is at five-thirty, and Sheffsbury is usually at six-thirty, so, okay, we'll work it out.
What you probably can do is, because I know you go to North Bennington, just head down and come down.
She's at, I mean, I mean at Sheffsbury.
She's at Sheffsbury?
Yeah.
Oh, well, yeah.
We'll figure it out.
Then you know what?
I mean, it's not like...
Yeah, we actually, you know, we love your presence here.
I know. But don't feel like you have.
Yeah, right, you don't.
Yeah.
And it's just because of the vacation, so I mean, you know...
No, it's fine. You can come the following month.
Yeah, I'll come the following week, I'll be working. But that's fine, so you'll do five-thirty on the twelve.
On the twelve.
Okay.
And what happens is, when we do change it, if the warrants aren't ready, then I'll just, I just go up and sign them.
The warrants will actually stay on its regular schedule, so Cindy will go and sign them, and then you'll see them at your next meeting. We can email them to you as well.
Oh, speaking, I'm so glad you used that word. Is there anyone here who actually needs a copy of the? Okay, let me back up, say it differently. Can everybody get the electronically, or pack it electronically? Or do you need a paper trail?
I called and asked them to stop and they didn't.
Well, this is, we're doing a survey now.
Yeah, we're doing a survey, so. What do you need?
I don't need.
He does being able to print it.
Rather than having it on, this is more paper.
Yeah, my printer doesn't always work.
Your printer doesn't work?
Always.
I tried to go that way, but I'm back on paper now.
I prefer the printer, the hard copy.
Just a lot of printing.
Okay, actually.
I prefer the paper.
Yeah, so there's three of them. I get the paper, but I think I'd like to try it electronically.
Okay.
So in other words, Powell needs three.
Right.
Angie, Jim.
Okay, it's easier if you all do the same thing, but if you want, we can differentiate it, you know, and have it be electronic.
As far as electronically, you just go get it.
Right, you can get it off the website.
The night before the meeting, I went on the website and looked to see if there was anything there. I didn't have it printed.
Can't we just bring our computer here and look at it as we go?
Oh, sure, you can bring it, yeah.
Well, I can bring the print copies to the meeting.
Oh, okay.
That's the other thing. If you can get it electronically, but you want a print copy for the meeting itself to take notes on, whatever, I do that. I like to take my notes.
I don't have time to like come home from work and print and read and then come to a meeting. I don't have time. Sorry.
No, no, that's all right. It's fine.
It's not, we can advance.
Yeah, yeah, it's a week in advance.
So if we bring our computer here, Todd, we can, we have the capability of opening it up and.
Personal computers, bringing.
Yeah, we can get, we can get them an access code to internet only.
Yeah.
So you go through the internet, which you'd be able to do at home anyway. So it'd be internet-only access.
So the bottom line is you're not gonna mail it, right? Is that what we said, you're not mailing?
No, we are gonna mail. We're gonna mail three and two electronic.
If you're gonna bring a copy to the meeting, you guys can keep them email or.
Okay, whatever, but we'll.
Let's try, I'll try it electronically. It's okay, I'll try it electronically.
Well, Jim is still, it's easier if we have more than one person. So let's do three paper, two, you'll just assume that you're getting it by email and your regular access through the internet, okay? And we'll try that.
Shouldn't you do this in March in case the same people aren't here?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, we'll take it all in March.
We say status quo till March?
Yes.
Where you going?
I might lose.
If you don't have the computer, I can understand.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I understand.
All right. We do have an executive, is there anything under other that needs to be brought up?
I think I would just like to let you know that we had a board chair's.
Go ahead.
Board chair's meeting today and part of the discussion was how we put together the annual reports for each of the districts that are distributed before the town meetings, annual meetings, and the ballot vote. And what we discussed with the board chairs, and they were in agreement, is that this year, in the elementary annual reports, we'll actually insert in the back the MAU annual report rather than having a separate annual report for MAU. So that each of the elementary districts will have the MAU because you will go to ballot to vote on MAU as well as your Powell. And we will have in the beginning explanations of how the tax rate gets blended with MAU because what people have been thinking when they go to the ballot box and they're voting separately on MAU and Powell, that they're actually adding together the tax, the budgets, when in fact, they're united in the tax rate. So we're gonna show how that works in the book. And so it made sense to have both in the book.
That's a great idea.
Thank you. Well, I'll have to give credit to Rick Pembroke for that because he was the one that started thinking about how we're, how we're doing the annual reports. And there are plenty of good ideas coming from administration and board chairs as well today. So we'll put that all together. But it should be very helpful because people are very confused about the tax rate and the fact that they're voting several times on budgets that are really separated out for vote, but they're combined for the tax rate. And then the state funding is also very complex and people are not understanding that. So we'll have a chart in there that will help people understand the state funding as well.
Is that a book? I think it's a book. That's interesting.
No, it's all electronic and you can request a paper copy. No, it's just, it should be that thick.
It's not complicated.
Yeah, it's very complicated. But we'll have pie graphs and charts, pie charts and graphs. Get those mathematical terms right.
Okay, do you have anything else?
The legislative breakfast is Monday at 7:45. And there are a number of topics that are of interest to board members. Some of the things that will be discussed is how the base tax rate is set before your budgets even start to be formulated. We'll be talking about 270, which is the preschool, universal preschool bill. We'll be talking about school choice. They've just made a few changes to the public school choice for high schools in reporting deadlines. And there are a host of other. The pension fund for the teachers is an issue for board members as well because it's not funded sufficiently for sustainability. So that's, that's gonna be on the agenda as well, so.
And anyone can come? Any board member can come?
Yes, any board member or administrator can come.
If you freeze 7:45 on Monday?
7:45 on Monday at the SU office.
What's on the menu? What's on the menu? Motivate?
Usually it's a continental breakfast. Fruit. The menu is the content of the agenda.
That's a good one. Okay. I see. Do you have, I'm not sure who you are, but did you come in? Yes, I am.
I just, I have a concern about the pairs. I've been complaining for a while. I don't agree with them not being on the buses. I don't agree with them being on one bus and not the others.
Okay, well, we understand your concern. I think it's an ongoing project that we're still trying to work out. I don't think we want to make a quick decision until we gather more information as to, is it working, is it not working? But could I have your name?
Tammy.
Tammy.
Are you a parent or a parent?
I'm a parent.
Has your child had problems on the bus?
Yes. And I've also had a child that was on the bus that was a problem, so. I know, you know, having a child that has issues, having a child that was issues. And I understand that we have the video, but that video is not gonna stop what's happening at that moment. You know, little Johnny is gonna be beaten on, little Snoozy. And what's that video camera gonna do?
To where if there's a para on the bus, that para can get up and stop that. Well, we definitely take your concern under advisement. And like I said, I think, I don't think the board's ready to just say, put a stop to either way right at this moment. I think we're still trying to study it and figure out which way is the best way to go for the safety of the children. But I appreciate you coming in. You're free to come. I'm surprised. I'm happy to see someone in the audience from the public.
You guys did just do a background check on me that I got back today that starting tomorrow, I will be volunteering on my child's bus.
Okay, but you went through the background check?
Agreed.
Through central office?
Yeah.
You'll be volunteering on the bus, did you?
Yeah, I'll be riding on the bus in the mornings.
I don't know what your policy is about that, but you'd have to check.
Oh, I was for writing, well, I spoke to Joel and he's reminded me that, you know, anybody, even if you volunteer in the building, you need to have a background check.
Oh, the background check.
Yeah, that's what I told her, yeah.
Whether or not your procedures for use of your buses allows, whether you have volunteers riding the bus, whether it's something that.
We've never had this problem.
You probably never had it come up, yeah.
No, it's never.
It's never come up.
I mean, it's worthwhile, from your perspective of your concern, worthwhile for you to volunteer to do that. It's whether or not, we certainly would want to make sure the insurance company knows that we've got a volunteer on the bus.
There's precedence as far as field trips, to have volunteers on the bus for field trips.
Yeah, field trips, volunteers get background checks and are approved to go on buses all the time for that specific purpose that they're chaperoning for a field trip. So it's similar, absolutely, Jim, it's similar.
So we'll have to check the bus policy.
But we just need to make sure the insurance company knows that.
Just read it. Okay, all right. Okay, FYI, the SBSU student enrollment for January is enclosed. And the budget status report is enclosed. Is there any discussion on either one of those issues?